Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 15th City Council Meeting for the City of Cannon Falls. Could we have roll call, please?
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
Geske.
Here.
Ronnberger.
Here.
Lundell.
Here.
Montgomery.
Here.
Althaus.
Here. You rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
All second.
Motion by Bringle and a second by Duncan to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted or one motion as presented or may be removed for discussion and resolution as council business. For you at home and in the audience, I'll go through the consent agenda. Item A, just incorrect claims for the accounting period ending June 10, 2021. Item B, the minute meetings for the June 1, 2021 City Council Meeting. Item C, approve the summer/fall event street closures. Item D, approve repairing of curb and gutter at 325 Limestone Road. Item E, approve the resiner heater replacement on Building 40 at the wastewater treatment plant. Item F, approve the hire of Brendan Klitsky to the fire department. And item G, approve the hire of Joe Stocker to the fire department. Is there anything the council would like to pull down?
I'll pull down E.
E?
Yep.
Okay, we'll put that under council business as item C.
Could I also pull down item D?
Okay, we'll put the curb and gutter at Limestone Road as item D under council business. Okay, anything else? Can I have a motion to approve items A, B, E, F, and G? Hold on a minute.
ABC.
A, B, C, F, and G.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Lundell, a second by Bringle to approve I, M, A, B, C, F, and G. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, council business. Item A, approve the alley paving. I'll turn it over to Dan.
So this is on council business because at the last commission meeting, Public Works Commission meeting, we had two alleys on there that are in the packet. But I later got a bid for this little chunk of alley between the winery and the antiques on Fourth that will tie into the new sidewalk and curb. So I just wanted to make you aware that it's an addendum to the other two alleys.
Okay. All right, could I take a motion to approve the addition of the alley between the winery and the antique store?
So moved.
Motion by Duncan, a second by Bringle to approve the additional paving piece between the antique store and the winery. Is there any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, item B is a tax increment financing district number 2-10. I'll turn it over to you, Laura, but it's to approve engagement letter with David Drown Associates and approve a resolution calling for a public hearing on the establishment of a tax increment financing district 2-10 and adoption of a tax increment financing plan relating thereto.
Good job. All right, good evening, council. This particular item is in reference to the Cannonball lot. We've been working with a party, Keller Bartman, out of Red Wing, and they're proceeding with some plans to develop a multifamily housing complex on that property. And it'll be market rate housing. There's been some questions about that, so I thought that I would just address that right off the top, that it is market rate. It's not a subsidized housing unit. And anyway, we're still in kind of figuring out some of the terms of it. But in order to start this process of creating a TIF district, we obviously need your approval and support behind that so we can proceed because there's, like I said, there's a public hearing that we need to set. And then we have to contact county, we have to contact the school district. So there's just a timeline in order for us to keep on track and on pace. That's why we're here tonight. So in your packet, you can see that there is the engagement letter for us to work with David Drown and Associates. So they would be the ones that would be facilitating and doing, you know, contacting the county and setting the meetings and doing really a majority of the work and then figuring out the TIF plan. So that's what the first couple documents are. They do charge a flat rate. There will be some legal fees, obviously, associated with that, with drafting documents and whatnot in the future. But anyway, so you've got their rate in there, the schedule of events. And then there is a site plan, and we only have this particular site plan right now just because that is, we had to try to figure out that there was going to be enough parking for the number of units. It'll be about 78 units is what they're anticipating. So I just included that. And because we don't have a 3D rendering of the project, I just included a couple of the buildings that they have down in Red Wing. Two of them are operating their full capacity. And then the one that they're working on down in Zambroda broke ground probably about a month ago, maybe. And ours will be similar to that. But I just wanted to show you what the project kind of looks like. So, and then there's the resolution in there. So I think I'm prepared to ask or answer any questions that you may have. But this is kind of the first step in us moving forward with this project.
It's nice to see the timetable over here, you know, how you're projecting things to happen here. Any questions for Laura?
Why does David Drown sound familiar to me? What did we work with him before, or them? That guy over there?
Really?
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay.
Who came up with the name McCannonball subdivision?
That is actually what it is called. It is the McCannonball subdivision. That's not a little piece of trivia that I threw in there. That's legit.
Wow.
Really?
Isn't that interesting?
Well, I learned something.
Well, things get named for stuff.
There you go.
Okay.
Okay.
Every apartment you rent, you get a free order of fries.
On Tuesdays between 2:00 and 2:05. That's funny.
You know, I like David Drown Associates. We worked with them when we did those interviews, and they were very...
Very fair.
Very fair with us, I'll tell you that, you know. We did interviews with them. Well, any more discussion? I take a motion, first of all, to approve an engagement letter with David Drown Associates.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion by Geske, a second by Duncan to approve an engagement letter with David Drown Associates. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And item two is take a motion to approve a resolution 2549, calling for a public hearing on the establishment of a tax increment financing district number 2-10 and the adoption of a tax increment financing plan relating thereto. I think that hearing would be the first meeting in August?
August 3rd.
Okay. Somebody like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2549.
I'll second.
Second. Motion by Duncan and a second by Montgomery to approve resolution 2549. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Okay, item C was brought down. That's the improvement of a resiner heater replacement at Building 40 at the wastewater treatment plant. Derek?
Yeah, where do I start, I guess? So it's my understanding that the heater is approximately $30,000 just in the unit. And if that's the case, our low bid is basically $30,000. So they're either putting it in for free, or I have bad information, or maybe they're, I don't know. It just kind of raised a red flag with me. And then Googling them, they have some bad reviews online. Does that mean everything? No, but it's just kind of another red flag for the Harris company that I had. And then looking at the four quotes we have, I noticed there's one that's a local company. And as a city, you know, around Christmas time, we're always telling everyone, hey, you know, shop local, shop local, let's support our local business. Might cost a hair more, but you get good service and you keep the money local. So then my thought was, well, maybe we should be following our own advice. You know, Cannon Valley Mechanical, those guys have done a lot for the city. I believe just a week ago, they fixed a long occurring problem down at the library. And, you know, if something goes wrong with this thing, a year, two, three years down the road, and you call them up, I mean, they'll be there that day, probably within the hour, where some of these ones up in the metro, I mean, maybe they can squeeze you in next week. So I don't know. My thoughts were just, you know, yeah, their number's a little higher, but sometimes, you know, to get a good quality company and keep it local, you know, costs a few more dollars. So that's all.
If I can add to that, I did some discussions with our local contractor, and I heard that he did respond within an hour or so of a problem on one of our buildings. They took care of it. It's kind of handy to have them around. He cut his quote down to 35,000. So we're within... Oh, now I gotta do math in my head. 5,000 of the low bid, correct?
Yeah.
So, and to restate what Derek said about everybody telling everybody to shop local and support local businesses, and maybe we better put our money where our mouth is, too, and keep everything local. And you know the response time is going to be better on other things, too, if they know they're in good rapport with the city. So that's all I have.
Just to piggyback on what they're saying, I think there's also a value cost of, like Derek had said, of knowing who you're dealing with and the standing up for their work and being able to be familiar with the product. Going cheap is not always the best. We've worked with Harris before. Yep. And they might be a fine company, but when mistakes are made, we've had local companies have to step up and clean up that mess. And I feel like maybe we should make that move where instead of going on the cheap and crossing our fingers and hoping that everything works out okay, that, and we save 4,000 up front, but the machinery starts to go bad quicker than it should have, then we have to pay a different company to come in and clean that up. Maybe we go with the same company, and we know that we've got the trust and the value and the responsiveness and a good rapport. And I think this project, I mean, obviously, it's not such a little amount that we can just make this decision randomly, but the difference itself is pretty small.
Any other discussion?
Steve, you said he cut his bid?
No, it's not a bid.
Oh, it wasn't. Oh, it wasn't.
These are quotes.
Oh, these are quotes, okay. But did you tell everybody else that you were letting, that he was gonna quote again? I mean, usually you give, you don't...
This isn't a bid, so you...
Okay. I just, it just seemed kind of odd that you said he cut his price to within 5,000. It sounds like he was given an opportunity that others were not to revise what they were gonna... I'm just saying, it just seems a little odd. I don't care one way or the other, I was more worried about the process, so.
Anything else?
Well, I'm gonna make a motion to go with Cannon Valley Mechanical for 35,000.
I'll second that.
Motion is made by Geske, and a second by Lundell to go with the bid from Cannon Valley Mechanical for 35,000?
34,850 on the quote.
34,850?
No, you're looking at the wrong one.
That's Apex, I think.
Oh, okay.
30...
And that's been revised.
35,000.
35. Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, item D, the curb and gutter at 325 Limestone. Matt?
Yeah, I brought this down just because in the bid proposal here, it just says soil correction is extra, price to be determined. I was hoping somebody would be here tonight that we could chat about what does soil correction mean and how much, like, is this gonna be an extra 100 bucks? Extra 1,000?
If I can give my opinion, I think once we remove the curb and we start to dig down, we'll be able to see what we're dealing with right away. I mean, it could be just a few buckets of crushed rock, and we have that available. So I don't think it's gonna be substantial. I think we'll know. And you can see on the picture that this depression was caused when they dug the services across to the address. So whatever they put back in that trench wasn't some good stuff. So I think we'll find out right away, once we pull the curb away, take that first layer crushed rock off, what we're dealing with, so.
Yeah.
If somebody had to ballpark, you know, is it a couple hundred bucks?
I'm gonna guess a couple hundred.
Okay.
Something we can absorb pretty easily?
Yeah.
I was cautious to see a bid that said price to be determined and that we'd agree to it because, I'm not saying that somebody would take us for a ride, but honestly, what's the difference between 1,000 and 2,000 if all of a sudden they say, hey, it was an entire day of work, we had to bring extra machinery, we had to do all this, and we're like, oh, we're on the hook for it?
Well, when we first discussed this, we didn't know if we were gonna have to excavate, you know, six feet down, but it sounds like we're not gonna disturb, you know. Once we find what the issue is, we can probably just pack in some crushed rock.
Okay.
But I do know, like, when we do bigger projects, you'll see a line in there, contingencies, which would cover this type of thing. So that's what, along with Matt, I was a little concerned on that.
That's a good point.
It'll be interesting to see what's in there, actually.
Yeah, it will be.
Time capsule.
Time capsule, probably, yeah. Okay, motion to approve then the repairing of curb and gutter at 325 Limestone?
Just real quick before we vote, was there any other bids that were made, or was it just the one on the...
It was presented as a package, since O'Gorman is going to also pour the...
The driveway?
The driveway.
Okay.
He wants it to tie it all together.
Yeah, okay.
Somebody make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Lundell and a second by Bringle to approve repairing of curb and gutter at 325 Limestone Road. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, let's get into reports. Kyle, Chamber?
Thank you for having me, and good evening, community and council. I first want to start off with giving a huge thanks to Neil Jensen, City Administrator, John Althoff, the mayor, and the City Council members for your show of support to the chamber. It was very, it was a wonderful surprise and very well worth it. I appreciate that. And so, thank you very, very much. We do have our golf tournament coming up. It is our 30th annual golf tournament on the 24th. That's a Thursday, June 24th, at the Summit Golf Club. And right now, we have 14 teams. In the past, we've had 20 to 24 teams. And so if anyone knows of a group of four that want to play, please let us know. I mean, we already know we have first through third prizes for the top three teams in both flights. So six teams are gonna get really nice prizes. And besides that, we do have another whole group of prizes and awards that we give out to the players. And so please let the chamber know if you're interested.
Kyle, what was the date on that again?
June 24th, next Thursday, a week from this Thursday. And, excuse me, 12 o'clock lunch, 12:30 shotgun start, 5:30 dinner. And we are having boxed lunch, assorted sandwiches, and a burrito buffet for dinner. And so the nice thing about doing it out at Summit is that it's not just the golf course. We have Cannon River Catering helping. We have Fireside Lounge and Supper Club supporting the event. We have, right now, that's all of them. That's it. But we do have, we've gotten meal sponsors, Hinkle and Lundell Heating and Air Conditioning. And so those are coming in very nicely. As you know, last week, the chamber did cancel, postpone, excuse me, postpone our open air fair. The heat index was way over 100 degrees, and so that was the reasoning for our cancellation. It is rescheduled for Thursday, July 8th. And then again, it'll be 2:30 to 6:30. Non-chamber member vendor fee is $25. We had 28 vendors all signed up. We also have Ryan Karsten of Hot Hits Entertainment being the DJ and the announcer for the event. So that is continuing on. Then we also have an open air fair scheduled for August 12th. Then we also have an open air fair scheduled for August twelfth. And so let us know if you would like to be in one or both of those events. Some interesting events happening, and this is the library, but they are doing, excuse me, concerts in the park. And we haven't had that for quite a while. So on Friday, June twenty-fifth, I don't know if you know the Jolly Pops, they'll be playing at one o'clock. And it goes on July tenth, July twenty-fourth, and August twenty-seventh. And so there's four events, one PM or two PM in the afternoon, they're all Saturdays, and so I hope you bring your families out and enjoy the music, so we can keep doing these kinds of events. Any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Kyle.
That's it.
Okay, EDA, Laura?
Um, in the EDA world, right now, I'm working on, the Smith, so Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation just opened up their Small Towns grant. Last year, we did receive five thousand dollars from it that we used toward a promotional, like, marketing package for the local foods, Cannon Roots branding. And so I'm trying to figure out what can we possibly write for this year that would either help do another promotion toward, for tourism, that will drive tourists and also get people to look at us for possibly starting or expanding their business here. And so that's due in July, middle of July, I think, so anyway, so cross your fingers for that. Then tomorrow, I'm actually meeting with a company to update our Grow Cannon Falls video, so we did that marketing video out in two thousand seventeen, and it was really more, you know, still shots, we had a couple interviews in there, the, the former owners of the winery were, you know, are in it, so now obviously that's changed hands, but we want to possibly add a new business that has opened up since then too. So, anyway, so we're gonna kind of do some discovery work, and now that everything's greened up and looking beautiful, we thought that now's the best time to do it as opposed to winter or even fall. And anyway, so that hopefully will be getting done in the next few months. And then just continuing to work and massage the Calabartman project for the Cannon Falls, just making sure that that is moving along at a right, at the right pace.
Okay, thank you. Public Works, Derek, you wanna take that?
Yeah, um, we had a few things on the agenda. One of them was regarding a water leak, a request for a refund on some water payments, the alley paving we talked about, the Sandstone, Sandstone Road, we talked a little bit about a potential home going in there, maybe some issues with that. We talked about the, the limestone road curb thing that we just passed. I feel like there was something else. Do you remember?
What's there?
Continuing business.
Ah, continuing business.
Ah, oh, Grove Street, the water issue there, I believe we're gonna have the company that's doing our boring under the river come up there and check it out and see if they have any ideas on what we can do up there. Yeah, I think that was about it.
Okay. Uh, Park Board. Neil?
No meeting.
No meeting.
No meeting, oh, that's right. That's right, that's right.
Typical.
We won both games though. The first one I missed.
Wow.
Okay, Finance Committee, Bill?
Uh, yeah, we had quite a number of items, I'll just briefly touch on them. We had none on the agenda tonight here, but we have, we discussed a thirty-year-old fire truck that we gotta replace and talking about how we can finance that a little bit earlier than we intended. We had a discussion with the Cannon Falls Township regarding annexation and how to make that a little more cooperative. A quick response vehicle for the ambulance. We talked about additional mill and overlay project financing that might come to hand. We also discussed the Semcra land there on Sandstone Ridge. We also talked about broadband and on, when we redo the, repaint the water tower, maybe water tower ring expansion, so we can put more things up there. And then a couple of budget discussions and we changed our meeting date in July to Thursday, July eighth at five o'clock.
Planning Commission?
Ah, yes. We had two administrative subdivisions, one for the Hayes property and one for Nate's garage, there was a lot combination there. And then we had a discussion on the variance for a house going up on Both Drives, Sandstone Ridge area. Just a personal note, it's gonna come before the council, I strongly disagreed with what the Planning Commission approved, but the final vote will be with us, of course, in July. Correct? Okay, and that's, that's it there.
Okay. Library Board?
I don't, I don't see Nicole, so I don't think they met last night.
Okay. Okay, let's go, let's go around, Dan, you got anything tonight?
I do. So on the water side of life, the Department of Health Consumer Confidence Report will be available at, reviewing at the city hall or at Public Works Building. It's an annual report we have to advertise. So the pool's open and running, looks like good attendance the last two days, lessons are going good, so.
Great.
The Mill and Overlay Project pre-construction meeting was today, and tenuredly scheduled for next Thursday for the milling, and then they will do the paving on Friday, the twenty-fifth. So they're gonna start the, the milling at five AM on Mill Street West. And they should be done with the milling by eight, and then they'll move to the residential areas. And then the next day, they're gonna start the paving at five as well, so they'll be done by eight.
Dan, are you gonna let, not so much that the businesses would be open, but there is a residence or two there that could be affected if we can let them know?
Right, we wanted to, we don't wanna set a date firmly right now, 'cause we could get rained out, so we're thinking by Monday, we'll, we'll notify everybody along Mill Street.
Good.
So, yeah, and there'll be some closures, they'll probably wanna start closing Wednesday night, so they don't get any traffic on the street for Thursday morning, so.
Are we gonna do Park Street too? Did we okay that?
That hasn't been okayed yet.
No, that was, in the Finance Committee, we, we started that discussion on how we can finance that, because the blacktopping material, the costs are about as low as we've, we're gonna ever see them again, so.
Let's get this done first, then.
And then you approved the alley paving, so we may start that Thursday, so the day after tomorrow. And they did some pothole patching today, they did their one load a week today, so.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay. Laura, anything? You've kind of gone through that. Joe, anything from the police department?
Nope.
Okay, Neil?
Just a couple items. Unfortunately, we had a arson, start a garbage cannon fire in our Amish Pavilion here last week and did a considerable amount of damage. It doesn't look like it, but when it hits the rafters and the roofboards, now you gotta start tearing things apart pretty good. Called the League of Minnesota Cities, they got a reserve of about ten thousand dollars on, on the damage. So they did also say that we're gonna post a reward that they will cover up to two thousand dollars, leading to the arrest of the person that did this, so hopefully we can somehow figure it out. And then it was a couple days later, John Birch Park, The Crows' Nest, the door was busted in and, and was found to be busted in, you know, up there, I don't know how long it's been, but we're starting to see a little uptick in arson and damage vandalism. Hopefully it'll, it'll settle down, but, you know, if, if you've been in this business a long time, this comes in waves and, and hopefully we can catch these, these people that are doing it and make an end to it, otherwise it's somehow just keeps continuing, so.
Neil, do we have any cameras that cover the city parking lot?
Um, no, we don't. And I, I talked to the LMCIT adjuster about cameras and, and what he told me was, they're usually doing this stuff in the complete dark, and to have enough cameras to cover the areas that they find to vandalize is very, very difficult, and then when you do get a picture of them, it's not usually the best, so. He, he's, that was the first thing I asked him about, was, you think that would work? I mean, he does this every day, and, yeah, he suggested not to do that. But that's all I got, I just wanted to let you guys know there's some trouble brewing out there.
Okay, let's go around the console, Steve?
Um, yeah, Joe, can you take care of that trouble that we're having?
Just, yeah, handle it.
I ju, I just wanna say, you know, we had a, a small event here that concerned a lot of law enforcement around the area, and for the people out there that don't think cops need continuing education and some of these extra classes, well, that's why. That's why, right there. You don't think we need it, there's your, there's your example. And that's, I just, I gotta just take my hat off to all those responders and teams that were all available and knew exactly what to do and settled it without too much, too much issue. So thanks go out to the, to all the officers, responders. That's all I got.
Matt?
Exactly what Steve said, thank you. It was handled well. And, yeah, it could've been much worse, that's one of those situations where you don't know what you're dealing with behind that closed door, but it got handled well, and the safety of the public was a priority during that. A couple other quick things, thank you to everybody with the pool. The pool has been phenomenal these last couple days, it's just been packed, kids are everywhere, it looks good, it's fun again to be out there, so it's so nice to have the pool back. Trollhaven Park, did anybody ever reach out to you? I've got somebody that wants more trees, and then I got somebody, the, the baseball diamond there is a great little baseball diamond, kids go there and play, but the bases don't have an anchor, they're just sitting there? They're kind of rotting and-
Yeah, we, we had that discussion, maybe using some, some of the used bases from Archie Swenson-
Perfect.
And putting them in down there.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah, awesome. And then I had a resident that talked to me about the construction that's going on at the apartments down there, just south of Casey's, those, everything's being redone, facade, all that stuff. Well, the parking lot is being used by the construction company, so the people who live there are forced to park on the street. Well, they're parking in front of people's private mailboxes and sometimes where their garbage and recycling is to go out, so some people have had to run to the post office to get their mail, or to have their, call their garbage company. And it was believed that we had an ordinance that you could not park within ten feet of a mailbox, but upon further review, it seems like there might not be an official, that that's just kind of a common understanding of you don't block somebody's mailbox, but I guess when you're in a pinch and there's construction, people will park anywhere they can, which is frustrating some residents in that area, so I just wanted to put that on our radar. That might be an issue that, I know it only comes up every once in a while, but it'd be frustrating.
I think they're just about ready to pour the sidewalks around there, and it looks like the grading of the parking lots are coming along really well. I don't know when, have you heard when the paving is gonna get done?
The paving's gonna be next week, they're gonna finish the sidewalks this week, and they're scheduled to pave next week, so hopefully that'll alleviate a lot of the, the issues down there. And yeah, they're kind of parked haphazardly down there, but-
Yeah, yeah.
For, for the most part, down, down by me there, everybody's pretty respectful of the, of the mailboxes anyway, but I still get my bills every day. But yeah, up, up further west there, I can see where it gets a little tight, maybe not paying attention as well.
Yeah, that's all I got.
Is there a city ordinance telling you can park on the street?
It's, is it forty-eight or twenty-four, without being moved?
Joe?
I'll have to ask somebody else.
Yeah. Oh, look it up.
Yeah, fair enough.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know.
Bill?
I just wanna do a comment, both the downtown Farmers Market and the one at Artisan Plaza were both going, I think I saw when I passed, four vendors downtown and about eleven out at Artisan, so it's good to have those going, I'm sure there'll be more as, as all the produce-
It's rolling in.
Crows. So, that's it.
Okay. Derek? Rachel?
No, nothing to say.
Laura?
I'm good.
Okay. I just wanna comment too on the pool, looks great. Farmers Market, like I say, that's up and running, and a hats off again to the first responders for that mishap yesterday, so. A couple of things, a couple of meetings before our next council meeting, EDA meets on July first, Public Works on July first, and the Park Board on July first. Those are committee meetings that'll be before our next council meeting, so I thought I'd bring them out. Public input, I don't think there's anybody here, so I think we're just gonna-
Oh, Kyle?
Kyle?
Yes, it is part of the chamber, but I do wanna thank Public Works publicly, because the flowers have just grown so much in the month that we've had them. I mean, they're down and over the baskets now, and that's due to the watering, and especially the extra watering that you guys are doing because of this heat, and so thank you for that. The city appreciates it, and I hope everyone does out there.
Yep, they look nice.
Thanks.
Okay, anything else? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Duncan, second by Montgomery, adjourn, any other? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.